Good morning and welcome. I would like to call this 218th organizational session to order. Please stand for the salute to the flag.
(Inaudible)
Thank you. I will call on the county clerk, the Honorable Joe Pancha, to give the invocation. Um, please stand again, sorry.
Dear Heavenly Father, in humility we bow our heads in the presence of your greatness. As we in public service approach these difficult times, give us courage to make tough decisions that will benefit our people, and a wisdom to think beyond our own situations, and explore new ways to provide necessary services. Fill us with compassion and never lose sight of our poor, our elderly, our sick, or our youth as we make our decisions. Blessing guide our new president and members of Congress, our governor and members of the legislature, our new chairman and members of this board of supervisors. Watch over the members of our armed forces here and abroad, bring them safely back to their homes. Let us be your legs to walk the extra mile for our people, your arms and hands to mold a better world, your voice to give us courage, and your eyes to see what is wrong and correct it. And we ask all of this through your most holy and precious name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Pancha. And I'll swear in the newly-elected supervisor from the town of... Would Mr. Giordano and Mr. Monti please escort Mr. Wilson to the county clerk to be sworn in and escort him back to his new seat?
(Inaudible) 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 Congratulations. (Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
I will now call for the roll for the 2017 Board of Supervisors. Mr. Morrow.
Here.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skazavava.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pledy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Whitson.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Glouand.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
Thank you. I will now call for the nominations for the 2017 temporary chairman of the board.
Madam Clerk, I would like to move the name of Gerald Morrow from the town of Chesterfield as temporary chairman for 2017.
I'll second that.
Mr. Harrington moves the name of Mr. Morrow, seconded by Mr. Moore. Are there other nominations?
I move the nominations to be closed with a third last one ballot, Jerry Morrow for temporary chairman.
I will second that.
How those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Would Mr. Harrington and Mr. Merrihue please escort Mr. Morrow to the county clerk to be sworn in and then to the dais?
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. The first order of business is to adopt the rules and regulations that will govern this board for 2017.
Resolution number one, adopting rules and regulations of the proceedings of Essex County Board of Supervisors.
Can I have a motion on this resolution? Moved by Mr. Pledy, seconded by Mr. Miga. Any discussion or comments? If not, shall we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Morrow.
Yes.
Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Depot.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Monti.
Yes.
Mr. McNally.
Yes.
Mr. Skazavava.
Yes.
Mr. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pledy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Marnell.
Yes.
Mr. Whitson.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Glouand.
Yes.
And Mr. Preston.
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
I will at this time ask for nominations for the 2017 Chairman of the Essex County Board of Supervisors. Skazavava.
Mr. Chairman, it's my pleasure to move the name of Randy Preston, Supervisor from the town of Wilmington. This will be my 27th year serving on this Board of Supervisors. During those years, I've seen many different supervisors serving the position as chair for this board. I have also served with many different supervisors from all the towns in Essex County. The supervisor that I am nominating, Supervisor Preston, has more than proven his commitment not only to his community, but also to this county. I can recall a few years ago when Supervisor Pledy was serving as vice chair, and he was sitting up at the DS and he said he had a horrible nightmare one evening. So we asked, "What was the nightmare?" He said, "I woke up in a panic and in a cold sweat, and I dreamt that I was Supervisor from the town of Wilmington." I think that we all realize now that with the leadership and direction that Wilmington's current supervisor has shown, and by his commitment and work ethic, that today that dream would no longer be a nightmare. Supervisor Preston and I have had our share of differences through the years, and in my opinion, that's a good thing for this Board of Supervisors. For that is the reason that we have a board, so we can reach a consensus after debate and try to do what is in the best interest of our constituents. Supervisor Preston has established relationships with all of our elected representatives from the governor's office, our state legislatures, and our federal elected representatives. Someone asked me why I would support a chair that is not a Republican or a Democrat but registered as an independent. I replied, "You know, that's probably a good thing." And if you look at recent elections in this county, the days of the one-line voters are over with, people. That's not the norm for our constituency any longer. Supervisor Preston has worked very hard towards finding a solution to the current EMT crisis that all of our towns are currently faced with. He has also worked to have the White Face Veterans Memorial Highway rebuilt after numerous decades of neglect. And he's also peed off many supervisors, me included, and some department heads over the years because he asks questions and he doesn't always agree with the status quo. Personally, I want a leader that always doesn't agree with me, and one that doesn't sandbag you, but always comes at you straight on. As I've said, we may not always agree, but at least we can debate our differences and at the end of the day, agree to disagree. It is without any reservations that I nominate the Supervisor from the town of Wilmington as our chairman for 2017, Supervisor Preston.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, it is my honor on behalf of the town of North Elwa to second the nomination of my friend Randy Preston as chairman of this board.
Mr. Skazavava moves Mr. Preston's name and nomination, seconded by Mr. Pledy. Are there any other nominations?
I move the nominations to be closed and the clerk casts one ballot for Mr. Preston as a 2017 Chair of the Board.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Would Mr. Skazavava and Mr. Pledy please escort Mr. Preston to the county clerk where he can take his oath of office and escort him to dais?
(Inaudible) 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 We will now call for nominations for the 2017 Vice Chairman of the Essex County Board of Supervisors.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gardner.
Board of Supervisors. It is my great pleasure that I nominate Sean Gillan from the town of Wiltshire, Chairman to the Vice Chair of the Essex County Board of Supervisors. As all that you know, Sean has served the country. Has served this country for 25 years and retired as a Navy captain. When he took his oath of office three years ago, the oath said, "To the best of your ability." And Sean has done that up and above. He has served on many committees and has chaired many of them. His high standards and views of the future of this board make him most eligible for this position.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Are there any other nominations?
I move that the nomination be closed for 2017 Vice Chairman. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Would Mr. Gardner and Mr. Whitson please escort Mr. Gillan to the county clerk to be sworn in?
(Inaudible) 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 I want to thank Mr. Skazavava for his kind remarks. Brings up different things. What really comes to mind is several years ago when there was the threat of closure of Mariah Shaw. Mr. Skazavava, Mr. Douglas, and myself went to Albany, one of several trips. And I'll never forget that I believe it was a powder blue suitcase on wheels that we had a report that was done by Dan Palmer. And we were going through the Legislative Office Building handing these out to anyone and everyone we could get.
It actually was pink.
It wasn't pink. I couldn't remember if it was pink or powder blue, but it was quite a spectacle to say the least. So anyways, thank you, Mr. Skazavava. I want to thank all the board members for putting your faith in me. I'm hopeful that I won't let you down. I will point out as along the lines of what Mr. Skazavava said, this will be my 10th year, starting my 10th year on this board. In the 10 years that I've been here, I have not seen partisan politics come into play. There's been disagreements. There's been some pretty strong disagreements. But the thing that I think we all should be proud of is when the meeting is over, everybody shake hands and everybody's fine. And it's been that way for the years that I've been here, and I think that says a lot for this board. I mean, I know that every once in a while you'll see an editorial, they should do away with the board and go to abort legislators, and you know what? At one point in my life, I actually thought that. But I don't think that anymore. I think we're the closest to the people, and I think we have the people in mind of our community which makes the county work. I don't think adding another layer of government is the answer here. I think we are the answer, and I think we should be damn proud of that. I think just the fact that we can vote on the issues and severely disagree that afterwards we're friends says so much, and that is what I have witnessed in the years that I've been here, and I just think it's an amazing thing. As I move on here, this is only going to go about two and a half hours. To all the department heads that are in the audience, and all the people that work for the county, regardless of sometimes my reputation, I can tell you that I do care about you. I care about the department heads, I care about the employees. I've always been a believer you should take care of them and they'll take care of you. That's how I've operated in my town. My employees may not like me, but I think they respect me and they know that I'm a trumpeter. And I would ask going forward that our department heads, we have monthly meetings, I certainly would like to see everybody here and give us even two, three minutes of an update of what's going on. I know that as we get into this month, Mr. Gillan and myself are going to be touring every department in the county to find out what your wants and needs are. We want to hear from you, we want to know what's going on. So we will be out and about, and I guess on that topic, I just want to leave with you and everyone here. Please don't lose sight that we work for the people. So that's the important thing. We need to not lose sight of that. That's who we work for. That's why we're here. The next and the most important thing as I go forward is for several years now, I've been involved with the EMS crisis that's here in Essex County. And a lot of people may not even understand the magnitude of what's going on, but there are instances in this county today where people are dialing 911 looking for help. And it could be 45 to 50 minutes later before an ambulance arrives, and that is unacceptable. There are squads in this county that are on the verge of folding right now. So that is the most important thing to me going forward in my tenure here as the chairman this year. There has been a task force set up. We have been, I spoke personally with the governor about this the first week of February last year, and I'm very, very hopeful. There has been about every three weeks, the group has been having conference calls, meetings, and we have been talking with the governor's office. A representative from the second floor of Health and Human Service who oversees the Department of Health, Patty and myself are trying, not to be excited, but we are told that there's going to be some action in this coming year that's going to be very, very positive. I'm trying not to get overly excited about that, but I'm hopeful that we've finally got through to people. And this isn't just Essex County. We've had conference calls with other counties throughout the state, anywhere from Albany County to Livingston County, and everybody is in the same hope. There is a crisis out there, there's nobody volunteering anymore. They can't even find people to hire. So we think that Albany has heard our concerns, and we've been told we are going to be seeing some changes, hopefully very positive in the future. This county was awarded a grant to do a study on the feasibility of consolidating EMS in this county. That's moving along at a very good pace. And I'm hopeful that in this year, we're going to be able to take some action. Because to me, it is truly a crisis. And sadly, a lot of people don't get it. A lot of people take it for granted that they dial 911 and, you know, somebody's going to show up and save the day. And I'm telling you, that's a real struggle for that to happen. So I'm very hopeful that we're going to hopefully at least have a path forward before too long this year as to trying to resolve this problem. Because I can tell you one thing, everyone who dials 911 deserves to get some help, and help in a reasonable amount of time that can be a matter of life and death. And I can assure you, if it's a heart attack, 45 minutes, I think everybody can understand it's too long. So I'm hoping that we're going to be able to avert that, and I want to thank everyone that's been involved with moving that forward, that that is certainly the priority on my list. I'm going to move on now to the Boreas Ponds. I'm sure everybody's read about this, but this is something that is really near and dear to the towns in southern Essex County. A lot of communities in the Adirondack Park struggle with the day-to-day, just life in general, you know, losing the population, so on and so forth. I know that Mr. Moore from North Hudson, Mr. Miga from Newcombe, Mr. McNally from Minerva, also Brian Wells, Supervisor from Indian Lake, Clark Seaman, the Supervisor from the town of Long Lake, we have made numerous trips to Albany and discussions with this. And I do believe that DC, I know Commissioner Segals is an outstanding person, and DC has been outstanding to our entire group in hearing our concerns about the need for things to be fair and balanced. So as we go forward, I want to thank the DC for everything they've done, and they've treated us very, very well. And now it rests in the hand of the APA and then on to the governor. And I would call on both, remember how important this is to southern Essex County and Essex County as a whole, and the Adirondacks as a whole, and that we come up with a fair and balanced approach to this classification. I'm also very happy to say that all 12 counties in the Adirondack Park have came out in support of alternate one, and I think that should say a lot of itself. The next thing, I'm going to head on just very briefly, is that I'm hoping to wrap my fingers around broadband. There has been an initiative put out there from the governor. I can say that there's a lot of frustration up here in the rural communities. I know this is a topic that comes up in my community all the time, and a lot of it has to do with being underserved, and, you know, one company doesn't want to come in, and they want a lot of money to come in. But I hear this complaint constantly, constantly, constantly. I also think the mapping. Everybody should try to find time this year to take a look at the mapping for your town of who has service and who doesn't. Most cases, I'm finding that mapping is wrong, that they're claiming there's service when there is not service, or it's not reliable service. And I hear that in Wilmington all the time. So I'm hoping that I'm going to be able to start to wrap my fingers around this. I know that there was initiatives that are out there, but they're really, to me, they're really slow to get to Essex County. I'm not sure what the rest of the state's coming up with, but I'm very concerned about that, and I'm also hopeful that we can make a movement in the forward direction on this. I also want to thank everyone for being here. I'm kind of hoping that it wasn't just because there's a free lunch today, but there is. There is a reception at noon at the halfway house, which is about two and a half miles down the road here on the left. You're all welcome to join me for lunch. I also want to point out that I want to thank Jeff Farrell and June O'Neil from the governor's office for being here. They've been very supportive of Essex County. And as I move on here, I want to thank my wife, my good friend Larry Gibbons for being here, although try to keep in between my wife and Robie, I don't know what. You just got to keep an eye on things there. The next thing, I want to thank Dan Palmer. He is maybe not the way I would have went about it, but Dan Palmer has put this county back in the financial good, and I'm hopeful that this will be the year that we're going to get to the tax cap, even though I will say I'm a firm believer in the tax cap. However, I'd really like to see that, a firm 2% would make life a little easier for us, but I do believe we're going to get there this year. And even though Dan and I disagree on a lot, I told him there'd be someday I'd look good to him, and I think he knows that now on certain things. But Dan's done an outstanding job, and I believe he will get some cash. And we're also always, always looking for ways to make the county more efficient, and sometimes doing that ruffles feathers, but keep in mind what we're doing is in the best interest of everybody that lives in this county. We've got to keep our eye on finances, we've got to keep our eye on the property tax, and because that just continues to be a growing issue out there. I can assure you that we are going to keep our eye on that and continue to refine and be more efficient as we go forward. The last thing that I have, and I'm going to speak just very, very briefly on it, is believe it or not, for about the last three years, I've been involved with a group that's been looking at the effects of brooks salt. I'm not an environmentalist, but I do care about the environment, and I think they're starting to become some science out there that really makes the, you start to question that maybe we are... that really makes the, you start to question that maybe we ought to be doing something different. I'm not going to belabor this, but you will be hearing more about this in the future because it's something that's dear to me. And we all live on the water, have water near us, all of us do. And that really, a lot of that recreation is our lifeblood. And there's some science out there that's really starting to raise some eyebrows. And I'm going to actively pursue that. And with that, that's it. Thank you very much. Okay. Moving along in our program. At this time, I would ask Dan Palmer, county manager, to go to the front of the room and be sworn in by the county clerk. Maybe you can find someone that'll hold the file?
Sure. You sure you want me to hold it again?
I want to rethink that.
Start the roof.
He's an attorney, right? Well, he says. Mr. Chairman, I would ask that Michael Mascherini come forward. Mr. Mascherini? Ready, Mr. Pravantcha? Okay. I would ask that Allison McGady, Board of Elections, Republican Commissioner, to come to the front of the room and be sworn in by the county clerk, please. Round up somebody to hold the file. I would now ask that Sue Magner-McCreary, Board of Elections, Democrat Commissioner, please come to the front of the room and be sworn in by the county clerk. Ready to move? We will now move to resolutions of the day.
Resolution number two, authorizing compensation for the supervisors of Essex County.
Moved by Mr. Pelidi, seconded by Mr. Gilliland. Roll call.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihew?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monti?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazapava?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pelidi?
Yes.
Mr. Moore? Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Glorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
The resolution carries. Resolution number three, designating official newspapers for 2017.
Moved by Mr. Miga, seconded by Mr. Merrihew. Any discussion? Mr. Chairman? Mr. Skazapava?
Yes. The Press Republican and the Glens Falls Post Star. Can't we name them as alternate if there's a situation where you have to get something into a daily and just go with the Sun? Which I think would save us a considerable amount of money. Seeing as how the newspapers aren't delivered. They don't cover Essex County, very little of Essex County.
Hi, Tom.
Hi, Dan. How you doing?
I hate to throw a tough one at you first of the year, but that's all right. The Sun-Times really, in my opinion, is not a newspaper, end quote, as mandated by the law. Therefore, I'm reticent to, although I enjoy the Sun-Times, I think it's a very good newspaper. I'm reticent to allow them to solely handle our, you know, our special notices and things of that nature. There's been a court case involving that. And my memory's a little foggy, but it has to do with the fact that it's a free newspaper and there's some other things. So we can't use the Sun-Times for important notices. For general notices of a general character, in addition to our current newspapers, we can do that. So we can't, we can't accept out the Plattsburgh Press or the Glens Falls Post Star. And solely use the Sun-Times or the other. Sun-Times is not a newspaper designated by law.
We've been using them for years at Mariah.
Well, I don't work for Mariah.
With the Press Republican as the alternate, if we have to get something in a daily. I'm just saying, I mean, last year was brought to our attention, the amount of money we spend on Legals.
Yes.
And it's unbelievable.
I understand.
You know?
Yeah. No, it's a good point. But if you want to come up to my office, I'll show you the whole file on it. And, you know, especially even our foreclosure filings. That costs a lot of money. But we have to go with those other two newspapers because Sun-Times is not, in my opinion, a newspaper designated for such things under the law. And there has been a court case here in Essex County that has, that bolsters that.
Mr. Tyler?
Yeah, we just, do we have to do both papers? Or could we just use like the press as opposed, because that would save a lot of money also?
As I recall, the law says you have to designate two. I don't know why we, I assume we designate, I assume we designate fours so that it covers the whole county. But if you wanted to, again, the Sun is not an official newspaper. Can't be designated as an official newspaper. I guess if you wanted to pare it down, you could pare it down to three.
Right.
I think the problem is the press doesn't release, I mean, doesn't reach the southern end of the county on a daily basis. It's a delayed mailing.
They don't reach the northern end sometimes either.
Correct. I won't comment on that, but yeah.
Mr. Gilliland?
I think with some of our distinguished colleagues from the state here, this law probably needs to be amended at the state level because it has not kept, I mean, it was written in another technological age. And, you know, it's, we're chasing ancient history on public announcements in newspapers. It's not the fastest way to get the word out to the public anymore.
Very good point, Sean. And I think this is something we can certainly look into as we go forward. Why not? Especially if we can save money. Any further comments or discussion on the resolution? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Resolution number four, ordering the confinement of dogs to protect the deer herd.
Moved by Mr. Marnell, seconded by Mr. Gilliland. Any discussion? Mr. Skazapava?
If you get down to the third paragraph, be it resolved pursuant to section 122 of the Acts of Markanlot that this Essex County Board of Supervisors hereby orders that all dogs shall be securely confined. Just wondering how that impacts our new tethering law.
Different issue. This respects chasing after deer, Tom.
I understand that. But it does say securely confined. So I'm just making a point that could be a potential conflict here.
Okay.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Resolution number five, adopting an investment policy and designating depositories for county funds.
Moved by Mr. Tyler, seconded by Mr. Gardner. Roll call, both, please. Any discussion? Mr. Miga?
Just a point, because under community, I think, point decides its use of the U.S. law and that branches.
All to Newcombe. Right?
Okay.
Okay, scratch it. Thank you, Mr. Miga. Any further discussion? Not, roll call, both, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihew?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monti?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazapava?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pelidi?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Glorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
The resolution carries. Resolution number six, pursuant to Real Property Tax Law 554 and 556, delegating to the Essex County Auditor the authority to approve corrections to the tax rolls of not more than $2,500 in the payment of refunds due as a result of such corrections.
Moved by Mr. Skazapava, seconded by Mr. Miga. Any discussion? If not, roll call, both, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihew?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monti?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazapava?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pelidi?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Glorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number seven, of annual review of Essex County purchasing policy and all procedures related thereto, and authorization of the continued use thereof.
Moved by Mr. Tyler, seconded by Mr. Pelidi. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. That's all that I have. Anyone else have any? Mr. Monti?
I'd like to offer a resolution of condolence to the family of Becky Bosley, a longtime Lewis resident, a schoolteacher at Lisbethown Lewis Central School, who passed away this morning.
I get it, you're not in the center. I've got to go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else to come before this board? If not, thank you all again. The luncheon is at 12. Thank you. You stay on the journey.